Thank you for coming to attention. This is our City Council meeting for November the 21st, 2019. Welcome to our meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. Our invocation is by Pastor Delbert Rogers. Is he here? If not, let's all stand together for a moment of silence, after which we will have our pledge. Thank you. Could you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Madam clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Member Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Truitt?
Here. At this time, we have a presentation by Bill Underly, Chairman of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And it looks like he is accompanied by several distinguished individuals.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing us to be here tonight. Each of us is going to just present a little bit of the letter that you all received and just reiterate some of the importance we have here.
Can you wait just a second? Can you please turn the volume up at the podium, please? And leave it up? Thanks, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I apologize.
I don't turn it up, do I?
No, you're not the problem. You're not the problem. I apologize for interrupting. We just want everybody to hear what you guys have to share.
Okay. Thank you. I have here with me former Mayor Hart and Mr. Carl Theobald, and they're each going to talk a little bit about the sections of the letter. We were supposed to have Ms. Paula Stark here, too. Unfortunately, she was unable to attend, so I'll try to pick up on her section and then summarize everything.
Carl?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll do the introduction, so...
You'll state your name, please.
Carl Theobald. Theobald Construction, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, four years ago, the council created a committee. It's called EDAC, which is Economic Development Advisory Committee. And we are supposed to work on economic development and make suggestions to the council. We have made several over the past four years, and I would like to just point out which they were. The medical arts campus center designation around the hospital area. We did a design or proposed a design for the Florida Turnpike Interchange. The elimination of the building height restrictions, that we could go higher than 35 feet in the downtown area. We also would like to ensure that approximately 30 percent of the vacant land in the JPA would be reserved for commercial and industrial development. We worked with stakeholders, the downtown area, the CRA, and also we created incentive programs that the city approved. And then also currently, we're working on advisory support for a master plan for the city based on the concept of the envisioned plan that was done a couple of years ago. And also, we want to incorporate transportation plan into that advisory plan. That's my part.
Got to lower it. Good evening, everyone. Donna Hart, 965 Chamberlain Trail, St. Cloud, Florida, and a member of the EDAC. And I'm going to talk about the requests that we have in front of you, basically, because we started by listing the things that we've all accomplished together, and these are some things that EDAC would advise the council to work on and work towards. So the first one is a feasibility study and inventory of land services available for major job development in terms of like an industrial or business park. And what we have found since we've written this to you is that there's an update. OUC has gone ahead and put out an RFP, and they did pick someone to do this study. They said that they would help St. Cloud when we had first talked about it. They were there at the EDAC, and then they thought, you know, we should do it for the entire OUC area, not just St. Cloud. So that is their intention, and that entire OUC area would include our JPA. The, I don't know the name of the firm that they are negotiating with, but they did pick a firm, and they are negotiating at this point. And so, once they get that negotiation done, they may be ready to go out. And one of the things that we would like to see happen then, because this is kind of already done from what we'd asked, is that maybe the mayor could write a letter to OUC and thank them for including the whole area and ask them to start with St. Cloud. Since this idea came out of EDAC for them, and they decided to do their whole service area, we feel that St. Cloud should get, you know, the first part of this survey and maybe get a preliminary report out sooner than the rest of their service area. So we would ask that maybe a letter would be helpful in that area. The other piece is to do a feasibility study for additional hotel locations. And I know that we just heard that Heritage Park has gone ahead and awarded a bid for, what, four, I believe, hotels, which kind of puts a little bit of a crimp into what St. Cloud is wanting to do. But we still feel that maybe towards the east, more towards the east end of our city, at the Golf Links, somewhere in there where a lot of people are asking that there be a hotel in our city that's, you know, maybe a major chain. And so, a feasibility study for that would be a good step so that we could then be able to go to these chains and show them that study, and hopefully, they will work with us to get a hotel here in our city. And I think that Bill is going to do this next part about working with Neo City. This is another future ask.
We had another update just a little while ago on the OUC inventory that they were going to do. Unfortunately, the OUC inventory is going to be very limited in scope. It's going to name the top 10 positions within the OUC area, their service area. So that lends us to going back to what we originally wanted, and that was for the city of St. Cloud to do an inventory of sites available here so that we have our own and not rely on OUC because they're just limiting it to 10. And that would also include our entire JPA area, which some of it would not be included in the OUC survey that they did. So that will be one of our requests now. One of our other ones is that the city worked very closely with Neo City. We toured Neo City a few months ago, and when we were talking to the director there, the director was talking about discussing the number of industries that can come there and their jobs. And their jobs have to be at a certain level, and we have it here as $66,000, 200 percent of the county's average. We asked him, well, what about 199 percent? He said, they can't go there. And I said, well, where are you going to send them? He says, I don't know. They just don't go there. Would be nice if we had a place to bring those 199 percent jobs right here. So that is something that we're requesting the city work closely with the Neo City people to make sure that they're aware that St. Cloud is here and we're ready to go. We're also concerned about transportation, with the transportation coming up to key us in or work with the links and with any other type of transportation systems that they have so that we're tied into the networks for Kissimmee, St. Cloud, Kissimmee, Orlando, and over in the Lake Nona area. I'm picking up Paula's here, so I'm looking back at the notes for Paula. Well, I think I'll just go ahead at this point and just conclude because you have the letter. You can read what Paula was going to say. As the city saw a need four years ago to create our committee, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, we now present to you the most critical point of our city's future healthy economic growth. St. Cloud has great potential for jobs with our location close to Orlando, the Space Coast, Neo City, Medical City. However, we're very limited with land within the city for that growth, but we're surrounded by unlimited possibilities. Unfortunately, the county controls our future and is moving us into a sprawling suburb. We've been told there's approximately 22,000 homes on the county's books to be built around us. That's about 50,000 to 60,000 people. That's going to be certain traffic gridlock without the jobs, shopping, and entertainment that we need to keep those people within our area. The EDAC strongly supports the OUC inventory that they are doing. However, this is very limited in its scope, and we recommend the city to invest in its own inventory of all land parcels within the JPA. This will allow the city to know its own assets and have the information readily available to any developers. We also encourage the council continued land acquisition, annexation, to bring development under the city's control rather than the county's expansive housing sprawl. We would like the city to seek partnerships with potential developers and the landowners in creating site-ready business industrial locations. Time is critical in our future and drawing those jobs here for our people. Note Road was extended partially to assist the city to have available job center sites. But under county control, it's just more housing sprawl. Most cities have industrial, commercial plants and parks established for job growth. Our small area is mostly built up by now. In 2018, Mount Dora, with a developer, established 1,300-acre industrial park. That will be site-ready. This is our competition to get jobs here. We were given many reports through our meetings of potential job centers coming here to the city of St. Cloud. They were looking for 100 acres, 150 acres, 40 acres. There's nothing within the city limits, and everything on the outside seems to be zoned for homes. Again, you are building St. Cloud's future as a viable city to live, work, and play. I appreciate your support for us. We hope that you can assist us with the economic development, too, of the city, and we need this economic inventory done so that it's ready for our future job growth. So thank you very much, Mayor and council.
Well, I'd like to thank all of you and the entire EDAC committee for all the work that you've done and that you will continue to do. And all of these recommendations in this report, I think, is excellent and certainly has some issues that we certainly need to move forward with. Would anyone else on the council like to speak to this report? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Thank you again for all your hard work. I know I rely on you guys heavily for all this advice. I love the idea about Neo City because not everybody's going to be able to afford to go to Neo City, so it's like, you know, I'd love if we could be ready to catch maybe the second-tier companies and businesses that won't fit into the Neo City model. The question I had is, have we done anything with the whole opportunity zone that's located in some areas within the city of St. Cloud?
Yeah, can we have EDAC start looking into that?
Well, I'm asking, have they done anything?
They've been looked at. I know I've identified them because I've been looking at different things.
Right. So maybe we could work on, you know, focusing some things with that and getting with our new economic development person. I don't know what her name is, but trying to work on the opportunity zone and really pushing that out there.
What we're looking for, though, is sites that are going to be large enough to accommodate large-type of projects, and we just don't have them. When you talk about the city here, you're really landlocked with just small little parcels. We had been told probably last spring that there was a major Midwestern company that was looking for a transfer station, like an Amazon-type of building. We don't have anything available. So those are the type of things that we're looking at to get something larger so that it's ready site available, because we're competing against places like Mount Door that's going to have it, just in Lake Nona. And we've talked about Lake Nona, too. Tavistock, of course, is managing that. Not everything will fit into their plan for what they want for Lake Nona. We're right down the road from them. And if we have the sites ready and work with Tavistock, we could partner up real easily and get their overflow.
Well, one of the things I brought up a couple of meetings ago was the completion of the Turnpike Interchange and the layouts and things that are under design right now, and would it make sense that we change some zoning to, you know, feed off of this future full Turnpike Interchange? And I know the staff's probably working on it, too, but that was something I had mentioned, like, we really need to, like, get ourselves prepared and maybe do some of the front-leg work to attract the businesses.
Well, we've been told there's approximately 150 acres that could be a possibility there, but a lot of it is water areas that you can't touch, so you're dwindling it down. And again, it's, when you talk about 100 acres that might be left, you still don't have much.
Sure.
And we just need to look outside of our limits in the JPA area. And Note Road was a beautiful place where you could have put some business centers down through there, had some really good jobs coming in, but with the homes and apartments that will be going in approved by the county, it's taken away our opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to? Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, I'd just thank you guys for all you do, and I get a chance to talk to some of you folks when you're out and about, and I appreciate, especially Donna. She doesn't hit me up every single time, doesn't matter where I'm at. Are you working on that? Are you working on that? So I appreciate the consistency in what you guys are doing. We really appreciate it. So I don't think we say it enough, so thank you so much.
And she'll even hit you up when she's at it.
Right. Yeah.
All of you spent a lot of time, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for your time. It's a pleasure to see that you're trying to help us and move us forward in beneficial ways that we could always benefit from the citizens and from this council. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. If you'll get with me, I'll certainly start working on that letter and as well as Donna and the letter for trying to communicate directly with OUC to help accomplish those objectives with that inventory that you talked about.
Very good.
Thank you.
Don't be strangers.
Thank you, Carl.
We won't.
Thank you, Bill. This brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signed form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Please go forward. Please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Hewett Crumpler.
Good evening. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I've got a couple of things I wanted to highlight tonight to the council. And I guess, one of the things I sort of believe in life is that the important things are simple. It's really not complicated to do the right thing, and that I believe when you run for office, you should do what you say you're going to do. And the best way to measure that, in my mind, is to look at the flyers that you send out and what you tell people when you're running for office. Read that once in a while and ask yourself, is that what you're really doing? You guys usually run up here in this group on the idea that you don't want to have lower taxes and lower fees. You think that we should have good public safety. There's a list of things there. But the idea is, look at that and ask yourself, is that how you vote? Because when you vote, doing the right thing is really simple. Are you acting in the best interest of all the citizens of St. Cloud? Not your neighborhood, not your own interests, not your friends, but all the citizens of St. Cloud. In my way of thinking, council members, you've got a very big responsibility in terms of finances. It's a fiduciary responsibility. You're supposed to do what you're, the right thing with the money. And you just made a decision on the Stevens Plantation offers where I don't think you met that fiduciary responsibility. You took the offer that gives lower money, less money, and you took the offer that took away land that we paid for and set aside for the police, the public safety building, the new building that we need. So in my way of thinking, that wasn't a good decision. It wasn't in keeping with what you said, because that's going to cost the taxpayer more money to buy more property. Simple. It's really not, it's not hard to figure out. If you give away the land or let somebody have it for a song, essentially, the lower offer, then you're going to cost the citizens more money. Then you're going to want to raise taxes. I don't think that's right. Basically, when you do things like raise fees on people, if you raise a fee that's 22 percent increase over five years, ask yourself, are citizens going to get a 22 percent increase in their salaries or their pension checks? No, they're not. But just because you can raise something, a fee or a tax, or you can take the lower offer, that doesn't mean you should do it. In my opinion, you have to ask yourself, what's in the best interest of all the citizens of St. Cloud? And I think that sometimes you guys just, or many of you up here, and it only takes three, don't end up doing that. You end up doing something that you think is personally somehow, you know, you convince yourself that that's the right thing to do when it's not. Some things are pretty straightforward. I'll just ask that you please try to do the right thing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Meisner. I live in Stevens Plantation here in St. Cloud. I'm addressing today something that needs to be addressed again, is the audit report. The audit report that was done this year has deficiencies. Almost all of them concern Stevens Plantation. I know this was done prior city council, before this city council, and you got the albatross to try to clean up. However, in your audit report for the last five or six years, it's talked about deficiencies such as record-keeping by the DSD. Still not compliant. I am surprised that the auditor general has not requested a forensic audit of this account because you've been missing records for years, and it's been pointed out and usually not addressed. I've talked to the city manager and the city attorney about this, but I still think you need to do something better to address those concerns. We're talking about a bond issuance in 2003 that is in default since 2013. The city is trying to sell property to pay off the bond and maybe get some haircut of the bond issue by the bondholders. However, you have not paid your taxes for the last two and a half years. What would the city council do if the taxpayers of St. Cloud decided not to pay our taxes for two and a half years? How is that going to affect your operational budget? Remember, the city hasn't paid any operational fees to the CDD, which covers the maintenance of Stevens Plantation. This is something that should be addressed, and it's been hanging out there for six years and is still not completed. Most residents of Stevens Plantation would like to see the property sold and the DSD abolished. It has been a headache for the residents as well. Who pays the fees that were not paid by the DSD? The residents of Stevens Plantation. Please take a look at the audit report, and you'll notice five to six years are deficiencies that have not been addressed by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? If not, we move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If any one in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, council, I have any items that you're wanting to address. Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull A and J for discussion.
A and J. Anyone else? No? We'll pull item A.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a little comment about item M.
Item M?
Yeah, it refers to change order number three. That was actually a typo in the resolution. It's actually change order number two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Change order number two under item number M.
Thank you.
Ms. Matheny, what would you like to?
On item A, I'm in favor of this. I congratulate the city manager for coming up with a creative solution to the parking at our wildly popular new park that we have. I just, and I don't know if it needs to be in the motion, but I don't want parking on this property to be utilized until the crosswalk is in place. There's no crosswalk across 10th Street right now, and so I'm okay approving it, but I just don't want to utilize it for parking until that's in place.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
The flashing pedestrian sign yesterday filed up, and they're shipping it on December 16th, so as soon as it gets here, it will be installed.
Okay. So we can, I don't know if that needs to be a condition of the motion, to say that you don't park there.
I think that's direction to the city manager, so we'll approve it.
Is that enough direction?
Is that direction, council?
Yes.
All right. We got it.
Okay.
We won't let anybody use it until...
I just don't want to start directing people across the street when we had no crosswalk.
That's a good call.
And then item J, first, I wanted to thank staff for, I think I use this analogy every year, herding the cats and putting all of our estimates together. I just had a comment for council to see how you guys feel about this. I know we changed some things this year, and I know the process is getting better and better and better every year, but this year, we gave money directly to a few entities that also asked for money through this process, and I would like that not to be available next year, that if you get a line item in our budget, you cannot apply for this process. I just, that was one of the issues I had with a couple of the applications. They're all fantastic agencies, but, you know, we have a limited pool of funds, so does everybody?
I agree.
And you mean, do you mean, like, fee waivers for events and all that, too, or just the ones that are?
I'm just saying, if we gave Company X $25,000 in our budget, then Company X can't apply for this.
I agree.
Yeah, no problem.
Everybody's okay with that? Other than that, I have no comment.
Good to go. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? Please step forward. State your name and address.
Good evening. Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. On, I will say, I'm quite concerned about people crossing the street to go to that park. I think it's good that you put the crosswalk in, but I still think it's a very dangerous place for people to be crossing the street from parking lot. I'm worried about that, but at least you're putting the crosswalk in.
But at least you're putting the crosswalk in. You might need some other signage, some sort of stop sign or something to protect the people. On number B, the resolution regarding the increase in rates for the solid waste services. If I'm reading that properly, that's the bill of the five-year plan, increasing the rates a dollar a month for five years, each year?
That's correct. That's what we call option three. And I don't think, I think it's a little bit less than a dollar, Nassim. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Pretty close to that.
Pretty close to a dollar.
Okay, we'll call it a dollar, just...
We'll call it for just math sake. My math is not that great. If I calculated that correctly, that's, a dollar a month is $12 a year, times five years, that's $60 a year more that people will be paying at the end of the five-year period. So, the way I calculated it, and it might be wrong, is a 22, roughly a 22% increase. So, I would just say, you know, people are not going to have 22% more money in their pocketbooks at the end of five years. I'm pretty sure about that. Maybe the people that win the lottery will, but not normal people. And I think that's unnecessary. Again, it's an option, you can do it, but, and you've already done it, but I don't think that's in the best interest of the citizens. I'm fundamentally opposed to raising any tax or any fee that doesn't have to be raised, except for the fees, the impact fees on new buildings. Because new buildings are putting a burden on the, on every system we have, police, fire, sewer, water, and parks, you name it. So, those impact fees should be, in my opinion, at the maximum. All right, so that's B. I would ask that you change your minds, but I'm not too hopeful. On number, let's see where it is here. Number... I would say spending $164,000, if I read that properly, on item C for landscaping. Again, these are citizens' dollars. Was that really necessary? And maybe it is. But again, I think we have an issue here with spending taxpayer dollars like it's nothing. And I know that's not quite true, but it sure seems that way. On number item, let's see. E, I have a question. It says we're going to redo, we're going to give out $91,440 to GAI consultants to redo the Chisholm Park master planning. So, my question about that is, are we having to do that because of the properties that were taken by the county on the five houses where they took our property even though we made a valiant effort?
No, ma'am.
No.
It's not because of that.
Is that included in it? Would that be included in it? The redesign?
No, it doesn't include the five houses where we...
Okay. Okay, thank you. But I just want to note for the record that I think that was an abomination of power and that, you know, I give, I commend the city manager and the city attorney for fighting it, but I think that the council members had an opportunity to go forward and fight it again for the citizens, and you didn't do that. On number, let's see where it is here.
I think we are. Yes, ma'am.
You are?
We are fighting that, yes.
No, you're not. No.
No, we're not.
Four of them voted not to, Chuck.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
One didn't.
I know. On number, where is that? Okay, number H. H, you've got a $577,811 for two, I presume these are garbage trucks? Is that right? Two garbage trucks. And my point to you is, you know, again, you just raised garbage fees on people. You're spending, I don't know how many garbage trucks we bought, but I would ask a couple of questions there. Are we going to continue to leave the lids open, or are we going to ever get them shut for citizens? That's my question. And the second thing I would say is, you know, these roads can only handle so much weight. The trucks might be bigger, they might handle more weight as a truck, but have we looked at the impact of tearing up our roads if it's beyond the weight limits that we're supposed to have on these roads? Because I know when you go down Loma Road, you hit Orange Avenue, it says trucks go down Orange Avenue, because they're not supposed to go on Lakeshore, because it'll tear up the road. So, my question is, when you buy these new trucks, A, are they going to shut the lids? And B, have you looked at the weight limits to see that we're not going to be tearing up the roads?
All right, thank you, Ms. Crumpler.
Okay, I'm not quite done.
No, you need to hurry up, please.
I will, but you've got a lot of items here, Mayor. I'm only human.
You've got 30 more seconds.
Yeah.
I'd like to give her another minute or two, she needs to finish up.
I'm rushing, I'm rushing as fast as I can. On item K, I'll point out again, I believe, Mr. Sturgeon, I don't think that's a cost of $3 million, I think that's a grant money that you're trying to get. And we continued, is that correct?
It's funded by the state.
Yeah, my point is, you label it as costs, but it's really not a cost. It's really something we're going to get as a grant income. And if you could at least just put a note on there so people understand, that would be helpful. Let's see here. On... Little cost of design services. Again, on item L, is that, is that a grant we're getting as well?
The agenda references as a grant, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a grant. But you talk about cost, you should fix the other one above there, the $3 million the same way. That's my point.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler.
I sure would appreciate answers to the questions and not just deafening silence.
Would you speak to the size of the trucks?
Yes, our trucks are designed to carry an appropriate amount of garbage, and, you know, our roads are designed and tested to a certain standard. And, you know, those roads, if we had continuous truck traffic on them, it would damage them, but those trucks, you know, only go there once a week. So, the roads are, you know, acceptable with that.
And I'll let you address one more time. I'll need to do it again, on the lids.
Yes, I will talk about the lids. We have looked at this, and in fact, I'm proud to say we hired probably one of the most experienced solid waste superintendents in central Florida. He's looked at the issue. There is no mechanism to do that. We did go back and look at our policy. We have a new policy on a rollback service. If you are special needs, we already do that. If you're special needs with a doctor's excuse, we will roll your can back to wherever you tell us. And if you are, would like to have that service done, we have an application process you go through now that Nassim's put in place, and it's a $10 charge per month if you want that rollback service. But if you're disabled or special needs, we will do it free of charge, as long as we have the medical justification. Yes, sir, that is correct. That'll be close the lid and roll it back to where the citizen and like it put.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the consent agenda?
Could I have discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve with change on M to two instead of three.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Askew, a second from councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
No, because of B, item B.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you read the first item?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-20, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, repealing and replacing the housing element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, conflict, copies on file and effective date.
Good evening, Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This is the final public hearing for the housing element of the comprehensive plan. You heard of the last meeting, and essentially it's to repeal and replace the existing housing element, understanding that all the, most of the items that were already in the plan are being cared for, but we're also adding additional policies regarding affordable housing and some other issues related to provision of housing in the city. It will include updated goals, objectives and policies, and we also have some updated data and analysis to support the goals and objectives of the plan. It's consistent with our growth management strategic goal, infrastructure and economic development, and DRC recommend approval, the planning commission also recommend approval, and we got comments from the state in support of the proposal, and ask that you approve and adopt the ordinance number 2019-20 for the housing element of the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Have discussion, motion by council? Councilmember Trace.
I think we have a lot of great goals, objectives and policies we've put into this comprehensive plan, and it's a really good housing element compared to mostly the other ones in central Florida. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve final public hearing ordinance 2019-20.
Second. We have a motion from councilmember Trace, a second from councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item number two.
Final, final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-43, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, repealing and replacing the potable water element of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, conflict copies, sorry, conflict copies on file and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. This is the final public hearing for the potable water element. This item was, again, repealed and replaced with updated policies and objectives and goals. And the reason this was brought back to you was there were some comments from the state that were not incorporated during the initial review that we have since updated, and so we are now bringing this forward for final adoption. You see the note there that we received comments from the South Florida Water Management District, and we have now since updated the element to reflect those changes. It's consistent with our economic development, growth management and infrastructure, and the TRG and staff recommend approval, the planning commission also recommend approval, as it is this thing.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Have a discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilmember Askew for approval, a second from councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item number three.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2019-44, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating and abandoning a utility easement located east of Narcousie Road and west of Lake...
Whipporwill.
Whipporwill, specifically described in the body of the ordinance, providing for separability, conflict and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, this is an abandonment of easement for a property that's within Orange County. It is on the shores of Lake Whipporwill. It is an easement that lies outside of the city of St. Cloud, and was for electric utilities. There are no public work infrastructure utilizing this easement, and this went for DRC for review, and there were no letters of objection or any conditions attached to this easement. This is a survey that shows where the easement is located, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2019-44 to abandon this easement.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not? Could we have a motion or discussion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Askew, a second from councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mayor, may I get a minute before the next item? It looks like there's a bunch of folks here that look like they're here for the community support grant item. I just didn't know if everyone knew that passed already? As presented, okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew.
It's having a good government.
Okay, good, good, all right. It's civics class still, so I just didn't know if anyone was still waiting.
All right, well, thank you, councilmember Trace. If you're here for the approval of the grants, they have been passed, and so if you want to stay, great. Enjoy our council meeting. Item number four.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2019-45, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating and abandoning portions of the utility easement located on property located east of La Saya's Avenue, west of Packard Avenue and north of Pine Tree Drive, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for separability, conflict and an effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, this is the first public hearing to discuss the abandonment of easement that's located between Essell Avenue and Packard Avenue, north of Pine Tree Drive. It is an easement for power poles, and there was no objection from OUC to abandon this easement. It went to DRC for review and was brought to city council on the 24th. There was no objections or letters from affected parties, and there were no comments or conditions attached with this abandonment. The council heard this on the 24th, but took no action and tabled it. There was a couple of issues that was brought up for discussion. One was to clean a drainage ditch, and also to do, address a re-permitting of a pipe. And I think those issues have been discussed. I'm not sure the full extent of the resolution, but our public works director is here in case that needs to be discussed. This is consistent with our strategic goal for infrastructure, and staff recommends approval, and asks that the city council also approve ordinance 2019-45. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name, address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Steve McCon. I'm the vice president of land development for KB Home. My address is 9102 South Park Center Loop, Orlando 32819. So, we're the developer and builder in phases nine and eight, and this just came up last hearing. So, I believe that the cleaning out of the ditch code violation's been resolved, and we got confirmation from staff that that had been resolved. The, I'm not familiar with the pipe. That's something that I think the CDD and the CDD engineer is addressing, and the CDD obviously is not, not controlled by KB Home. That was in place prior to us coming in and building in that section, so, but those, I believe that they've been contacted and, you know, where, and going to work with staff to try to resolve whatever issues are there. But re-permitting of that's not something that happens quickly, and we're trying to get this final plat approved for phase nine. It's fully developed, and so we're ready to start building houses in that section.
Councilmember Matheny, would you like to ask a question?
Sure.
Go for it.
So, I did hear in my agenda review that the ditch was cleaned, so that issue went away, but the pipe issue remains. I mean, as far as I know, like, nothing's been done.
That's correct.
Or any kind of steps towards that?
No, ma'am.
So...
And what I'm trying to illustrate is that this area, the pipe existence, not on KB Home property, that's on CDD property. So, and we, again, don't control the CDD, they're their own entity, and anything that has to do with CDD property should be dealt with, with the CDD and their staff and their CDD engineer. So, we're just trying to get the plat recorded for phase nine. That development's been complete since August.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? Not? Will there be any further discussion or questions by council?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment to...
Please.
So, I think all of you, you received information that staff put together regarding available options to address this issue, where the, where this pipe is. And as has already been said, the issue related to code enforcement has been resolved, has been resolved, and that's in compliance. I did speak with the attorney that represents the community development district today, at least a backup attorney for them, and they, I gave, they have the information that was put together by staff. They understand the two, I think as was presented, the two options to address this issue, one being removing the pipe and one doing some vegetation control or cleaning out in the area. And, but they, obviously the attorney couldn't commit to either one of those actions, other than to say that their engineer was reviewing it and looking at it and would provide us some more information. So, I just wanted to update you at that level.
Any other discussion by council? Councilmember Trace?
If there's... If there's, Deputy Mayor Matheny, is there, there are drainage issues now because of this, this pipe?
Mm-hmm, and cleaning of the pipe isn't going to fix it.
And is it a design issue or is it a maintenance issue?
It is a restriction in flow, an artificial restriction in flow by leaving the pipe in place.
This was, this was something that wasn't a design element in either one of those phases.
These phases, yeah.
This pipe was there prior to any development happening in this section, whether it's an old farm pipe or something. And again, that's on CDD property, not KB Home property. So we're trying, we're trying to get that easement released so we can release those, get that final plat approved so we can start homes inside the development. This is actually off-site. It's not inside this parcel, so this, we're tying an issue that's not related to subject to hand, so release the easement and the ability to record the plat to, to those elements.
Understood. But this is a part of the master stormwater system, right?
Yes, it is.
That's where you go now.
It's part of the master stormwater system and the, you know, that pipe is a historic pipe. However, there wasn't eight feet of fill on top of the remaining land when that pipe was sitting there, you know? So it's a relatively easy issue to fix. It's, there's been no cooperation to date. You know, we've brought this up multiple times, so.
And are there future phases to go in the development or is this the last plat?
No, there's one more plat.
One more plat?
But again, this, this pipe exists on CDD property. KB Home couldn't even get the rights to access into that property. We're just asking to let our, let our business at hand move forward as opposed to holding us, which we don't have any control over the CDD or any leverage to make them act. Our homeowners just pay into that, that entity, you know, for maintenance of common areas.
Have you asked them? Did you reach out to them?
This, this just came up, like, here recently when we were asking for the confirmation. So we haven't been contacted on this. So until we heard about this earlier or late last week, I've never heard about the pipe.
Well, sorry, that's not accurate because your representative was here when it was discussed at the last council meeting. So there's been weeks in between that meeting and this meeting with an opportunity to reach out.
The only thing I heard about from the last council meeting was the code violation. That's where we contacted the CDD, whether or not they were aware of the code violation and whether or not that had been resolved and asked for written proof that that code violation had been resolved.
It was, it was discussed.
But again, but I understand, but we, we, again, aren't the CDD and I'm not trying to use legal separation. That CDD existed before KB started building in that neighborhood. So just like there's another builder in that neighborhood, they're not in attendance tonight and being, you know, asked to, you know, force actions on the CDD either.
Councilmember Trace?
Oh, sorry.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second. We have a motion for denial with a second. Do you have any other counsel for us?
I just would point out to you that it meets the legal requirements for abandonment of the easement and that's, I'm compelled to tell you that.
Madam Clerk? Or you want to say something?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's.
Can you explain that a little bit better than it meets the legal requirements?
Well, Mr. Anderson explained to you what is. So essentially, any, any property right that runs in favor of the city, either a right-of-way or an easement, is, is, and when they're dedicated, say they're dedicated for a public purpose or, and in this case, the public purpose was dedicated for the, for the construction, maintenance of utility lines for the general public. So when an abandonment is requested of an easement, the first determination you look at is to say, is it, does it have, does it meet that requirement anymore? Is there any public need for the easement area? And as staff has already presented to you, there, there isn't in the electric utility and the OUC who manages the city's utility said they didn't see, they didn't have any need for the easement area at all either. So that's what it is. The general issue related to any dedication of property is that you go back in terms of title and you say, at some point in the chain of title, somebody that privately owned this property dedicated that use to the public. So when, when it's no longer needed for the public use, that property right or their successors or assigns an interest, have a right to come back and ask that, basically for that property back. So in theory, the current owner of the property bought the property from somebody else, who bought the property from somebody else, and at some point along the line that easement was placed on. So they are the successors of interest to the, to whoever granted the easement, whoever owned the property at the time, and they're entitled to ask for it. And if it meets the legal requirements, which is it no longer has a public need, then it should be granted.
So if we move forward to this, I am not an engineer, but I'm sandwiched between two of them. If we go ahead and move forward with this and you release the easement, and I understand he wants to move forward with it, you're going to end up putting a more of a demand on this water moving through Gramercy Farms. They're a part of Gramercy Farms or their name wouldn't be on there. So I get that he's got his point where he wants to move forward, but we also, there's a, there's a, I would consider it a known problem out there that there's a fix for it and we just seem to brush it by every single time and we put more demand on the land and the water runoff there.
Well, that's, that's.
What's the answer?
I don't have an answer to that question at all because I'm, I'm not an engineer and I don't know how this impacts the stormwater.
But we're also not, we're not, the site's fully developed. So the water that's running there, so this, you know, we're happy to, you know, work with the CDD to try to force this issue, but for us to be held for this easement release, which your city attorney is saying that, you know, we have every right to ask for the city to release the easement, we've been working on this since July, and we've got other means, there's another plat that's being reviewed, so there's other mechanisms to, you know, say, hold us as the builders' feet to the fire. This is not the only issue and I would say this is not the appropriate issue.
Is there a way to, because it seems like it's heading in a different direction here. Is there a way to wait to the next council meeting? Maybe you can help and see if there's something you can do to, to.
We've already waited one council meeting, so we had a council meeting, it was tabled and so, like I said, but the, the final plat for this phase is on the next council meeting.
Right.
So if you would like to hold something, and this is just an administrative procedure, so get the easement released, the bigger thing is getting that plat approved, which is on the next council agenda, and we'll do whatever needs to be done to have this pipe removed by the council agenda in two weeks. So if you'll let this move forward, we'll deal with that and if I've got to get right of access from the CDD and we'll go out there and have our crew that's out there working on 9B handle this, you know, looking split.
Is that a promise from you?
I'm promising, like, we, we, we need to move forward. Like, again, we've been working on this since July.
Mr. Menzares.
If it is a promise, it's a promise that you have an ability to hold them to because this is only first reading.
Yeah.
So if, if, if this gentleman makes you that promise and it doesn't, and it's not done, then, you know, there's a final action that still has to happen in the future. So you do have an ability to hold them to that promise.
Councilmember Trace.
So I'd like to make a competing motion to approve ordinance 2019-45. Us, in addition to what you said of trying to fix it, us sending a letter to the CDD and possibly the Water Management District for them to fix this, make the corrective action on this ditch outlining, you know, concern for public health and safety if it's actually flooding out properties or could flood out properties within Gramercy Farms or within the city. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, but then also send a letter to the CDD to make sure they're on notice that this may or may not be happening. And then there is a CDD meeting, it looks like, from the website on December 19th. So if we want the city engineer to go there and voice the same concerns to their, to make it on record on their meeting as well, that there is this issue that needs to be corrected.
I need a little help here, Mr. Menzares. We have, we have a motion.
He made a competing motion, so if you have a, if there's a second to that motion, then the way it works is that you vote on the, in the, on the motions in the order that they were seconded. So you have a motion that was seconded, so if you do get a second from Mr. Trace's motion, then you would vote on Councilwoman Matheny's motion first. If that passes, you do not vote on Mr. Trace's motion. If it fails, then you would vote on Mr. Trace's motion.
All right.
So you still need a second from Mr. Trace.
I have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilmember Askew.
I have my light on.
Ms. Matheny, I'll have your light on.
Thank you. So my, my disappointment is the fact that, like, no progress has happened in the three weeks since we had a council meeting. And I mean, I know you're saying you didn't know, but frankly, that's kind of just a lame excuse to me because you had a representative here and you could have listened to the tape if you didn't know. I frankly.
Have we received any, anything in writing from city staff saying there's a problem, what the diagnosis of the problem is and what the potential is for correction of the problem? We've not been noticed as the home builder in this development.
Okay, your representative was here, right?
I understand that, but we've not received anything in writing from staff, saying that there's an issue.
And that's the letter I want.
Well, and, and, and my contention is to remove the pipe, not any other kind of alternative that's dreamed up. It's remove the pipe. But my motion still stands. We'll see how the vote goes.
Any other discussion? The motion before us is that we deny approval and that was a motion by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Trace.
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Askew.
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell.
Nay.
Motion denied, two to three.
Brings us to our competing motion. Could you state your motion again?
Motion to approve ordinance number 2019-45 with a letter to the CDD, KB Homes and possibly the Water Management District and District Engineer outlining the concerns we have and the request of removing the pipe before our next meeting, I guess. Do we know what the date is?
December 12th.
December 12th.
As you meant, you mentioned the CDD meeting's after December 12th, so obviously it would be back before you, before that. But we certainly would reach out to the Community Development District again.
And we'll go ahead and schedule a pre-app meeting with the Water Management District to see if we can just handle this as a maintenance issue, which won't require an intensive amount of permitting.
Yep, understood.
So you understand you're going to help facilitate this?
Yes, sir. I'm a civil engineer, so I understand the, you know, how it works.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
No.
Councilmember Cooper.
Nope.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero, three to two, I'm sorry.
I guess we'll see you again soon.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number five.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2019 dash 53, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, amending the City of St. Cloud's police, officers and firefighters' retirement system, amending Section 8 Disability, Providing for Codification, Providing for Subertibility of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With and Providing an Effective Date.
Good evening. Joe Eder, Deputy Director, HR and Miss Management. Primarily, this is just amending the retirement system for police and fire, adding the cancer bill that came, that was passed by Florida statutes back in July. So we'd basically be amending the Section 8, which is the disability section, adding cancer to that, and then that's the extent of it. And staff is definitely recommending approval for, for 2019 dash 53. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Eder. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? We have a discussion or a motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew.
Question, question real quick.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. This is going to be a cost, it's going to cost us to do this, right?
It'll cost 2,000.
$633, whatever.
Correct, yes, yes.
Whatever, something like that.
Correct. 2,637, 75.
Did we just, did we just miss putting them in to start with or?
No, this is the first reading, so that number would be in the next reading on December 12th.
Had you caught it, had you known it before this? I'm not talking, not talking about this last week.
Oh, I, I, I got you.
Further back.
I got you now.
In his, let's go back in history.
Right, no, basically, we did not get notification by the Pension Board Attorney until early November that we need to amend the disability section. Had we known it in July, this would have been here, you know.
So they missed it or you missed it or just both of you?
We're, we're making corrections when possible. I don't want to blame anybody.
We'll catch you a little quicker the next time?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Well, when it happened, it was, it was initiated by a change in the legislature in the benefits for police and firefighters. So that's where it started. So the earliest it could have been done would have been in July.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six.
First public hearing for ordinance number 2019 dash 54, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending ordinance 2003 dash 047, which is authorizing by chapter, which is authorized by Chapter 189 Florida statutes, created the Stevens Plantation Improvement Project Development Special District, the district to amend the jurisdictional boundaries of the district and provide that upon the sale of the property owned by the district, the property sold will be removed from the district boundaries and no longer subject to the jurisdiction of the district, providing for notice of the Florida Department of Economic Development, providing that all other terms and provisions of ordinance 2003 dash 047 shall remain in full force and effect and providing for separability and repeal effective date and recording.
Mr. Menzares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the Stevens plantation properties are, continue to be sold and move forward to the ultimate goal of the properties being all sold to private, into third-party entities, we are, we are proposing this amendment to the ordinance that established the seat of the DSD so that those properties would automatically be removed from the jurisdiction of the DSD, so we would not have to come back. So as you all know, the creation of the DSD was intended for the sole purpose of holding the property and then to sell the property. And so when all the property was sold, this amendment to the ordinance would allow the, basically, the automatic sunsetting of the DSD. And this again is introduction, first reading.
Thank you, Jesus.
For that amendment.
I'm sorry. Would anybody else like to speak to this item in the audience? Forgive my personal indulgence. We have a discussion or a motion by council?
Motion approved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Public hearing for Resolution Number 2019 dash 224R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Resolution 2018 dash 153R, which adopted the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager, finding the city manager had certified their, our prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is 2024R Budget Amendment Number Six, truing up accounts for fiscal year 1819. I'll give an overview of each fund and its increases and/or decreases to true up the accounts and I'll be open for any questions. accounts, and I'll be open for any questions. Please feel free to stop if you have any. The first fund we're looking at is the General Fund, which was an increase of 609,613. Of those 609, they were used to increase the revenues in order to cover the payments for the state and Florida police and fire insurance premiums to offset the pension expense. We reduced contingency by 345,968 in order to true up the motor pool fund, which we'll see in future slides here, for the cost associated for multiple years of vehicle maintenance. Budget, prior year revenues of 1.1 million were reduced to, for the budgeted inter-fund transfer in from the St. Cloud OUC inter-local. That comprises the General Fund. Moving forward, there was no increase to the gas tax. We return unspent budgeted funds for five projects using contingency funds totaling No increase to the 1% fund. We return unspent budgeted funds for the, using contingency funds for 12 projects totaling Additionally, we funded one project with $166,667 used from contingency in the 1%. Capital projects, there was an increase of 453,209. Of that comprised $83,333 for historic preservation grant. Prior year balance budgeted to return for all unspent projects to their funding source. In the utility funds, 251,053 increase. These were in relation to tap fees and reclaim water installations. The return of funds for unspent projects were done so here. Motor pool fund, as mentioned before, during the General Fund, 968,936 were posted to the motor pool fund in order to recover year losses from funds totaling from the 2010 through 2018. This was done by the percent of labor allocated throughout those years. This was an audit recommendation, and it so has been fulfilled. The balance, excuse me, the fund has been trued up and complied with audit recommendations. Staff is recommending approval and requesting from City Council the approval of resolution 2019-224 Romeo. Any questions?
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not discussion of motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I know in the last few years, the audits that I've reviewed since I've been on council, there's been that issue with the motor pool fund and that we were running in rears on that, so that trues this whole thing up. But have we figured out and resolved the issue so we're no longer running negative every year? So we've, we've taken care of that as well?
Of course, of course. So the plan to true them up is the phase one. The phase two of this is that we were going to be, with the new fleet manager coming on board, we will calculate cost, percent of labor, so that the funds, the inner service that they're being provided, is true to cost, and therefore would not have a deficiency.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Can I entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Matheny, second from Councilmember Cooper for approval. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Brings us to council action item number one.
Resolution number 2019-227R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Narcoucy Corners LLC and Commercial Development, named Narcoucy Oaks Animal Hospital, located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County, on the east side of Narcoucy Road, north of Jones Road, south of Jack Black Road, and west of Underwood Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Anyone to speak to that item?
I'm John Porter with Osfield Engineering, 103 Florida Avenue. Narcoucy Oaks Animal Hospital is 8,000 square foot animal hospital that's proposed on Narcoucy Road. It is within Osfield County jurisdiction, but the water and sewer provider is the City of St. Cloud, so we're here requesting water and sewer service through this agreement. So happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this discussion of motion by council?
Motion to approve, resolution 2019-227R.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, John.
Brings us to item number two.
Resolution number 2019-229R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2019 community development block grant, CDBG Metropolitan Entitlement Program Grant Agreement, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing of an effective date.
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. This is a resolution to approve a CDBG grant from HUD. And we had recently received a letter, actually back in June, that we were eligible, and since then, we accepted eligibility. Then we submitted an application back in August, and they received an award letter in November. And so we are now asking for the approval of this agreement, which is to receive the funding allocation of $319,076, and it will be spent over the next year. And this is a five-year plan, so each year, we will receive the same allocation and be able to work on different programs throughout the city. It's considered with all of our strategic goals, and staff recommends adoption of resolution 2019R to 20, 2019-229R, and to execute the agreement by the mayor and also by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Please go forward.
Hewett Crumpler Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I just have a quick question. Congratulations on getting the grant. And can you tell us what the money, an idea what the projects are, Andre? Thank you.
So there are several projects. There's at least five projects. Thank you. I don't have to look from memory now. One is for closing cost assistance. We will be working with the county. They currently do down payment assistance, so we'll be on the backend to assist with closing costs.
With low and very low income individuals?
That's correct, yes. On behalf of me, the eligibility criteria online by HUD. And then we'll also be doing a program for acquisition to work with Habitat for Humanity. So we are probably going to work on at least one to three house sites. We'll also have a public services grant for scholarships. We're working with Parks and Recreation Department to help youths to go through different programs with the Parks and Recreation through their summer camp enrichment program. We'll also be working on a weatherization program to fund, to assist with low and very low income households. And we also have a emergency rehab program as well that we will be undertaking. And then in addition, that will also have administration costs that will also be part of that funding. So we're trying to do as much as we can with the small amount of funds to spread it across many years, and also by working with other agencies that already provide certain services so we can maximize the dollars that we have.
Awesome. Councilmember Trace?
I just want to say, great job by staff, working on this and all the CDBG and housing element information. And I just want to make one plug for everyone to get counted in the 2020 census, because that's how we get all these numbers, to make sure we get all this funding for CDBG and some of our neatest individuals in the community. So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2019-229R.
Second.
A motion for approval by Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Brings to item number three.
Discussion and possible action regarding engagement with Gray Robinson, PA, to provide government relations representation before the United States government.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, back in the budget process, we placed $90,000 in the budget for a federal lobbyist, and that, the population of our city, I recommend that we hire a federal lobbyist to represent us in front of the legislative and the executive branch. There's grant opportunities that are available through FEMA, through water issues. The other thing, I had a discussion with our lobbyist, if we hire him, that as we go down this journey, we'll find different buckets of money we can apply for. In fact, today, I was brought to my attention a grant that we're not eligible for, but I didn't want to spend staff time. It would be nice to be able to run those kind of things by a federal lobbyist. Had a quite lengthy discussion this afternoon with Mr. Cannon, with Gray Robinson, and it is an ongoing process throughout the year for federal lobbying. It's not like the state process where it's a 60-day period and committee weeks. So it's a continuous process. And to be, you know, totally transparent, it's probably a two-year, two-to-three-year investment before we start seeing a return on our investment. But I do think, based on our population and the growth of our city, that we should hire a federal lobbyist.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So if we execute this contract, do we have a list that we're going to hand to them right away of, of things that we want them to work on?
We do not, but in fact, the work performance plan he's put in front of us, the first 60 days, that's what we'll do, is work with council and work with staff to come up with those requests for the federal legislature for appropriations. But like I said, the two things that I know of is water and FEMA grants. Just right off the top of my head, there's some money out there available for our communications center, emergency operations center. And then in a few years, we'll need some money to help us with Cypress Lake.
Well, I would personally like to commend you and the staff for the excellent work that you have done, coming up with the things that we need to make an appeal to our state lobbyists. It's been the best organized, the most succinct, and you've just done an excellent job. And I look forward to the work that you and the council can put together to make an appeal through this. I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of this recommendation that we move forward with Gray Robinson.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four.
Discussion and possible action regarding city manager compensation.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I could introduce this item. Obviously, at your, at the October evaluation of the city manager, at the end of the meeting, the discussion was, it was directionally came back to staff to bring back a potential discussion regarding an increase in the city manager's compensation. That's what this item is. The existing agreement that you have with the city manager affords the opportunity for the city council by action to increase that. I believe Mr. Sturgeon is asking for a compensation increase similar comparable to the 3% that's being, that was being provided for the general employees of the city. And that's the item.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Hewett. Is that all?
Your own.
Good evening, Hewett Crumpler Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I want to speak in favor of giving our talented city manager this 3% raise. I think it's well earned. As I said before, it's a very important job. It sets the standards for performance for every key job that we have in the city. It's a job that he hires every key person that we have, and has done a great job of increasing the credentials and experience in all of the key positions that I know of. And I would be very much in favor of giving him that raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? The audits? If not, I'll open up for discussion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for approval, a second from Councilmember Cooper. I will, before we vote on that, Councilmember Askew?
I'm all in favor, though I just want to throw in this side note. If you looked into compensation, especially all the folks that are around us, Kissimmee, et cetera, I think next year, I think we need to take a little closer look at making sure that we're in the same as line as everybody else that's around us. So just when next year comes around, I think that maybe we should get a little bit more of a notice, and we can take a closer look at some of the numbers that are, and some of the people who are paid around us, so.
Councilmember Trace?
And to piggyback on that, I agree with what Councilmember Askew just mentioned, but I think we should also look at the way we're doing the performance evaluation and all that. It's just kind of a silly process. You essentially get reviewed every week as we, as we sit up here, and, you know, we talk about the good things, we talk about the bad things. So I just think, you know, it's just an awkward process, so if we could just look at tweaking that, or having some other, I know we talked about it before.
So you're just sharing your frustration, or are you making a recommendation?
Well, it's a part of the, the contract, so I just want to make sure we maybe vet, vet through that language and maybe come up with something a little different.
Okay. Councilmember Askew again.
Is that something we can put in there, Mr. Manzaris, about this evaluation that you know my feelings on it? I'm not a big fan of evaluating.
Well, there is, as Mr. Trace pointed out, there is specific language related regarding the evaluation process, so we certainly can tweak, work on the agreement, to revise the agreement. With, this process historically was initiated, generated, and created by the city, sitting city council at the time. So he's your employee, so he can remove the, that evaluation process from the agreement completely and do as Mr. Trace said. Basically, it is an, it is an evaluation every other week, basically. Or if you have suggestions on a different process, we can incorporate that in there. But it's your process, so.
Okay. I don't like the process, so.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, council, thank you for the trust you put in me for this position. As you know, it's a tough job, and I enjoy working with all of you. I think we've moved this city in a very good direction, and our, our best years are still ahead of us. I did want to say that during our research for this proposal, that we noted this, Kissimmee actually does their city managers' evaluation in September, so allows them to put the, any compensation increases in the budget. And I think as we're tightening down the budget, and I'm, I'm asking my directors to do that, maybe we could consider moving it back to a period of time where we can actually add that money into the budget.
Well, I'd, I'd certainly like to recommend that maybe in an upcoming workshop that you bring that forward, and we have a discussion, so we can offer some input in it. And you guys kind of put together some ideas of what would be a better process for doing this.
Yes, sir.
Would that be a possibility?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And we're in agreement? All right? I just would also like to say, I look at the averages that are being paid to city managers for a city our size, and we are on the low, low end of that average. And what frustrates me about that is, you know, that's part of the problem we have with our staff. You know, if you don't pay them comparable to what surrounding municipalities and the county is paying, even though they have more funds, we, you end up losing great people that you spend a lot of money training, and we end up sending them somewhere else. And I just think, you know, we just need to take a harder look at this whole thing, and, you know, compensating all of our staff with comparable increases that surrounding areas are giving, and certainly take a stronger look in next year for sure at what we're giving our city manager. So thank you for all you do. I'd like for us to vote on this at this time. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
At this time, Mr. Manzaris?
Other than wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, I do not have anything.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, happy Thanksgiving to the council members. Secondly, I'd like to recognize one of our employees, Anna Hare, been with the city a long time. And it's always nice to see somebody in a position get their certification, their recertification. She is the custodian of our records. She does the filing, the scanning, the archiving, the retrieving, those public records requests, and works for Linda and her staff. And she got her recertification for the Florida Records Management Association. I wanted to recognize her in front of council for that. So congratulations to Anna Hare.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You gave her a free pass from the meeting?
Absolutely. That's what she asked for. Yes, that's correct. Thank you. The other thing, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for reminding. Mr. Bisson is tomorrow, our HR director's his last day. He's an emotional guy like I am. He didn't want to come tonight, but he wishes you all the best and he will be heading off and into the sunset to do some camping and enjoy his retirement. And Mr. Ed will be the interim HR director, and we look forward to working with Joe and starting a process for a new HR director, which hopefully Joe will be in.
Oh. I'm sure Joe's up to the job.
So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Trace?
Wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
You. I have stuff to bring up. I'd just like to bring up, a while ago, we brought up alcohol in the downtown area and being able to walk from place to place. Yesterday, there was a lot of people in the downtown. They had a sip and savor. I'm not sure that's what they call it. And I walked around a little bit with code enforcement and, and some other folks from the city staff, and we noticed that people were walking with beer and wine and things like that. So I'm sort of proposing to council, this is a cup from Clermont. They also do it in Taveries, Winter Garden, some other places. I talked to chief, he, you know, I would definitely want him involved. This is a cup that has a map on it. It has the city of Clermont on it. It also says beer and wine only, 10:00 AM to one, or 11:00 PM only, drink responsibly. Of course, you got to have that on there. So if, if there's something, or, you know, I'm not the smartest guy up here, but if somebody can come up with a plan similar to that, maybe especially during special events, the sip and savor things, historic, whatever we need, if, if the council's willing to do something like that, we're just making it a little bit easier to move around in the downtown area. You would have to have a special map for that, but I'm just bringing it back up here. I think we took it off when we were doing the historic of ordinance at one time, so I'm not, I don't know if chief wants to speak on it. I think that, I think, I would assume he's got a lot of concerns, especially with people walking around. It's happening down there. I just, it'd be better in something that's clear, something we can control. And I think it invites people to move around a little bit more during certain times, but not all times. But I'm just looking to council if they're interested in the idea, or maybe we can get staff or chief or somebody to take a look at it for us.
Dave?
Yeah.
Would that be special events only, or would that be during all days?
So again, people smarter than me, came up with some ideas of maybe even Friday or Saturday, doing the 10 to 11:00 PM only, and you have to have in a cup like this and/or special events that the city holds or they have to have a permit for.
Right. And we, we were very familiar with the ordinance, obviously, in Clermont, and it is, it is specifically limited to special events, but we certainly can bring back a, a sample of it for you to look at and you can decide. I think the special events probably works better. Usually, special events have had the, or have, as it works in most jurisdictions, they have a pre-event meeting, so everybody understands what's going on, what's going to happen, you know, what the plan is. So there's some preliminary step that keeps the fire department and the police department involved and they're hell, and they're happy, so. So I think that's why it probably works best with the special events only.
Can we look at some of the other places that are very successful, especially Taveries and some others? I don't, I don't know theirs is tied to, to events.
Right, we can look at it all, sure.
Are we in agreement?
Yes.
And then if, during that, can, can you talk to some of their police and fire as well to, to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences as well?
Refer this to the city manager and you get with the legal counsel and...
We'll report back.
Report back?
Next council meeting, we'll give you an update where we're at on that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think the police chief is itching.
And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Cooper?
I just looked at the chief and it looked like he was itching to stand up and wanted to say something about that, but guess, I knew you were itching to do it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. And I don't know whether I was invited up or not, but...
You're welcome.
Specifically on this issue, there's clearly a liability and a concern for public safety. Having done this for many, many years, there's definitely an avenue, especially for public events, permitted public events. The pre-planning, like what Mr. Manzares said, is key to this. The designated boundary areas are also key to it, so we don't have people wandering out and the concern for traffic. It's doable. It's a matter of good, honest communication with our merchants downtown to do it. It's a good start to look at the public event side and special permitting side for certain events throughout the year. And if it can be expanded on down the road, it's certainly worth looking at. But the boundary issue is clear cut as well, because once you start in this thing, you don't want people wandering out on 13th Street or anywhere else out there drinking beer. So we got to make sure that we, we box it in, so to speak.
Yeah, that's sort of why I like this, has the map right on it, has the rules right on it. I love that.
To the bathroom?
Whatever you want to put on there, man.
And we're pretty busy this year, so candidly, you know, I'm not looking to be the beer police, so to speak, so I'm right there with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Cooper?
Thank you. I just wish everybody to Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving. Bill, Sturgeon, can, city manager, could you tell me where we at in the St. Cloud Hotel? I know that time's growing short. I haven't seen anything.
Got me drinking water.
Nothing's breaking ground or what's happening?
I'm trying to think. I spoke to the building official last Friday, and they, the structural engineers had submitted their plans, and then our comments went back to them last week, so they have...
They've been doing that back and forth and forth?
They have. There's been some challenges. They're still within compliance with their permit, but like I said, they're going back and forth with the comments with the building official.
But is their time getting kind of short?
No, because they're, 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 they're doing the plan review part. That's actually continuing their process of the permit. But like I said, that, that's the only update I have right now, but...
So there's no way, no way that staff can press the flash a little bit to get it a little quicker?
Well, I, I think they had some significant structural challenges they're still trying to work through.
Okay.
And then, you know, we want to make sure it's safe, so they're, they're making sure they do the, the right due diligence.
Okay. You'll, you'll let us know when it starts to move?
Absolutely. If there's something, if I hear something next, I'll send you guys an email.
How much down at the lakefront are we going to be burning and removing?
Um...
How far to the west?
Stephanie, can you?
I had a drawing, but I thought in front of the lakefront, all the way down to the old sewage plant down there, can we go get down to there and burn it? Have we got a permit? Do we have a permit? When could we do it?
Yeah, well, our aquatic vegetation removal permit through Florida Fish and Wildlife does not go as far as the clinic area on the west side of the lake. I am working with FWC to try to modify that as a one-time modification to clear out all of the lakefront.
All the way to, all the way, you're talking about all the way to that?
Yes.
Okay. How soon are you doing the, you're permitting now or trying to, or?
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to modify the permit now. It's just a, a matter of speaking with them and then submitting the modification paperwork. But the, the lake won't be completely drawn down until February of 2020. That's when FWC will start their spraying and burning. So nothing will happen until at least February of 2020.
Okay. Okay, so you're at least moving in the right direction to try to do, get it cleaned up. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Bill, could you elaborate on the food vendors coming into St., city of St. Cloud? The charge that the, I guess it's the fire department is charging vendors when they come in here to do a physical check? I think it's like forty, I've heard $42 per...
For a food truck?
Yes.
That's required under the NFP.
That much?
Well, it's, it's required to do an inspection, and that was...
$42?
That was codified by the council when we put our fee schedule back several months back. But it's required under NFP for a food truck inspection before they operate within the city limits.
If you get five or six of those food trucks, or like on Christmas and stuff like that, that you're going to have, you know, three to five or six vendors, I wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine that more than an hour, an hour and a half time to go and inspect all those. If they take longer than that, I'm sorry, there's something wrong with them.
Personally, I've never inspected one. I, I, I'm not going to disagree with you.
And my, my question is, I could, I could see and envision $10 or $15 per vendor. I am hearing some of these vendors now are considering not to come because of this $42 charge. If you got to, you got to spend $42 to come here and open up your wares and try to sell food, you got to get $42 before you even break even. I mean, before you start going. I don't know how good sales might be or not be, and some of these weekends or something that we have specialty, it may not be that good. You know, a couple hundred dollars, they might as well not stay, they might as well stay home. So I'm, my suggestion is that $42 is a little bit high, it seems like to me.
No, and like I said, it was codified by the council. We brought that fee schedule. And I remember when we did that. I think, I want to say back in the summers when we did that. But it's, it's an inspection when they show up here. There's an inspection fee that our inspector has to go out there and do the inspection. And again, the reason the inspections happened, because there was some catastrophic event happened with a food truck, because they run off of LP gas.
Yeah, there's pumping.
There's, you know, some hazards that are there, and so that's what we're trying to do is protect the citizens.
It just, it just seems, it seems like $42 per truck, per come in.
It's six, it's six-month permit, though, I correct.
Is it every time, or?
No, six-month permit.
I'd have to ask somebody.
Somebody tell me.
Fire chief? I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. Cooper.
Are you expensive or are you reasonable?
Not as expensive as the police department.
Chief, you need to leave.
No, those fees were based on other agencies and that, and it's for six months, so they'll pay that fee and it's good for six months. And I believe it's $41. I don't have it in front of me, or committed to memory, so. But it's for a six-month period. So that, the inspector comes out and, anytime they come, they come 200 times, it's, they've already paid it for their six-month period. So they've already paid for that permit. So it's not every time they come that we're going to charge them that $41 fee.
Are you going to, are you going to inspect them every time that they come, though? I mean...
Yep.
You would?
Every time.
Okay. So six...
So they pay that $41.
How many, how many events? Bill, does somebody know how many in six months average, how many they would do?
Not, because there's other private entities that have events and, you know, some of the partners have events.
There was four or two vendors last night. Okay.
Yeah, it'd be different, it'd be a number. We can quantify, but it takes some time to figure it out, because like I said, we don't control all the events in the city.
Okay.
But, you know, six months, $42, and they come, you know, three or four times.
Yeah, that's, that's not bad. I just...
That's fair.
That's why I'm asking the question, so, yeah, okay. I think you answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate that, too.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. I guess the water, water, water lake draw, drawdown is kind of slow right now, and you're saying it's February?
It's about a foot a month. I actually come in that way every morning. It's, it's, you can start to see the drop.
But it looks like it's going to be slower than January, February, I would think. Looks like to me, they're not going to go down...
It's a foot a month.
They're going to go down, how far they're going to go down?
Stephanie?
I should have told you to just stay up here.
Yeah, we'll sit way back down.
I'll start moving my stuff together, so I ask you to it at the same time. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper. What was the question?
The, the drawdown for the lake, down here at the lakefront, it seems like to me it's kind of slow start, and you're saying January, February, they're going to start doing aquatic removal.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to get the water down fast enough to be able to do that.
Yeah, that's, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for Florida Fish and Wildlife. It is their project, but I, the target date had to, to start spraying and burning the vegetation and then also mechanically moving some of it was supposed to start in the February of 2020. So I'm, I mean, I can follow up. It's supposed to be a foot a month of water decrease, and they're supposed to get to 53 feet. So FWC is actually coming out to test the water level in the marina, so if there's some, you know, specific questions that you want me to ask, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. We'll give you, I'll give you a little bit of list.
Mr. Cooper, can I jump? Mr. Cooper, can I jump in for a second?
Yes, sir.
Over here. Dave, that island, I, I think Ms. Matheny brought up about a little jetty island, is that being constructed for one of the islands there? I don't think I've seen anything. Well, I call it Matheny Island, but I don't know if you want to go with that.
Oh, my lord.
I think they're doing it, but they're, they're doing it, but they're not doing it like I wanted, where we could put a trail down it.
This is Mark Ritaville for you.
Yeah, you'll be able to get out there when it's low, low water pool, I guess, because it, but South Florida will not let you attach an island to the existing land. But when it's low water pool, you'll be able to get, I mean, we'll still maintain it and mow it and, and stuff like that.
Okay.
You're going to have to get a boat to go out there to mow it, or?
Maybe.
All right, well, at least I'll ask you if I get any other questions, I'll ask you. Thank you, ma'am. Bill, can you tell me, is it Maryland Avenue, Ninth Street, where the large building that we kind of talked about, humongous, that was going to be built? Where are we at on that? Are we stopping it, or we?
Mr. Manzares.
We, Mr. Manzares, where are you at?
We filed an appeal for the order from the Board of Zoning and Adjustments and Appeals under the, under the city code. An appeal like that stays the operation of the approved action.
Okay.
So the city staff will, shouldn't be at the point of issuing a permit or anything for that obstruction, or the appeal will have to run its course.
How, what kind of timeframe are you talking about?
It's difficult to say with these type of appeals. There's, the circuit court has to review it and make a determination, so...
Would your, 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 your firm would take care of it?
Yeah, we've already filed it, yes.
Go ahead.
We already have. I think I sent everybody copies of it.
Yes, right.
And we, so I can tell you, you know, not allowing for the holidays, they usually take 90 to 120 days.
Keeps dropping it on out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Done. Let you go.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I have a few things. So I wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone as well, and I hope to see everybody at the community event on Saturday, which the mayor will give you the details of in a few minutes. I was privileged to go to the Main Street Veterans Dinner a few weeks ago, and I did find out there was a little bit of hiccups between, you know, normally the event's on a Friday, and it got bumped to a Saturday, and, you know, then there was a bunch of events kind of happening that same day. I also know that they fed about 90 veterans at this event, which I thought was pretty amazing. It was a great event. Again, I know everybody was kind of pulled off into a bunch of different events that day, but my request is if we could waive the rental fee to Main Street that they had to pay for the veterans event. It was, I think they paid like $422 or something to, to utilize the space, but I think since they fed 90 veterans out of our community, I'd like to see if I could get support from council to waive the, the rental fee.
Mr. Manzares, can we just waive that?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a consensus?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I, this one's kind of a funny one. This one's kind of a funny one. So, the Christmas parade is coming up, which the mayor will also give an update on, but the theme is Florida Christmas, so I was going to see if council wanted to dress kind of, you know, in a theme for the parade, you know, maybe wear like Hawaiian shirts and shorts and, you know, straw hats and stuff, just to kind of be...
You want to look like you?
If it's not cool.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But I thought that would be kind of cute, since it's a Florida Christmas.
It is.
I mean, you know, some tropical shirt. It doesn't have to be Hawaiian.
People are wearing shorts and...
But, you know, it's always hot, so I just was seeing if everybody wanted to kind of do...
All the councilmen are wearing muscle shirts.
We're going to look like her.
If y'all would be interested in kind of dressing at a theme for that.
Muscle deal. You into muscle deal or something?
Yeah, we're all good. Okay, the last thing is, I got, I was at the BOCC meeting on Monday when they worked on, they had an agenda item to refinance Osceola Parkway, which freed up funding for a bunch of roads, and I asked the director, the executive director of Transportation and Transit, to send me an email, because they listed them all real quick and I couldn't get them all written down. But in case you were unaware, they, the following roads will be widened utilizing proceeds from Osceola Parkway refinancing. So, Point Santa Boulevard, Parton Settlement, Bill Beck, Boggy Creek, and Simpson, and these have a timeframe of being complete, complete, by 2025. So, they made a commitment to do that, and then that also frees up impact fee dollars to do other roadways. They also made sure to say at the, because when they started talking about it, I was like, what's about Neptune? You know, like, did Neptune drop off? But there, so she included that on here. Neptune will be widened from Parton Settlement to 192, utilizing mobility fees. And then they say Simpson will be, Simpson from Osceola Parkway to Boggy Creek is being widened, utilizing DOT monies in fiscal year 2022. So, there's a lot of road construction that broke out at the Monday BOCC meeting, so that's pretty exciting. Just wanted to share that.
Better roads.
That's it.
You done?
Mm-hmm.